Evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Council meeting of October 6, 2021. I like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Vice Mayor Haddaschel?
Here.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Rakuchi?
Here.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Here.
Mayor Bernuscony?
Here. Thank you. I'd like to ask our former mayor of the city of Roseville, Carol Garcia, if she would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please remove your hats if you have one on and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk to please announce the meeting procedures.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. If you've not already picked up an agenda, they are available at the end of the staff table. If you're here to speak to an item or issue not on tonight's agenda, you may do so under the public comment section of the agenda. Twenty-five minutes is allocated for public comment with a three-minute time limit for each speaker. As a reminder, the Brown Act does not permit the council to take action on issues or items not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to an item that is on the agenda, you must stay within a five-minute time limit. Speaker time limits are monitored. When the lights on the podium blink red, you will be asked to conclude your comments, and if you do address the City Council tonight, we would appreciate your name for the record.
Thank you. And we do have a phone-in option this evening for public comment for item 10.1 because the public hearing notice published in the newspaper stated that we would have that option, even though our governors changed that law. So the phone-in public comment will not be allowed for any other item. And we have two presentations this evening. The first one is a proclamation for the Placer Breast Cancer Awareness Month for October 2021, and I will meet Carol Garcia at the podium to present that.
Good evening, Mayor.
Okay, well, this is an honor to be able to present this. As you probably all know, Carol is the founder of the Placer Breast Cancer Endowment, and we have a proclamation this evening that acknowledges that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I'd like to read from the proclamation and then give you a few moments to say a few words. Okay. So whereas while breast cancer touches the lives of Americans from every background and in every community, considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, whereas it is estimated that more than 281,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer in women will be diagnosed in the United States in 2021, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And during this time, it is fitting to advocate for breast cancer research and to educate the public about breast cancer detection, risk factors, and treatment. We support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor those who have lost to the disease. This October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families who are a source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of the medical professionals and researchers working hard to find a cure, which Carol's been working very closely with that for many years. So on behalf of the City Council, as the mayor of the city of Roseville, I do hereby proclaim October 21 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and urge citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with issues involved in breast cancer awareness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bernuscony. It's an honor to be here this evening to accept this proclamation on behalf of all organizations that are raising funds and doing good work for breast cancer. I was diagnosed with breast cancer at a very young age in 1998, and in 2005 decided that we needed to do something about this and find a cure. So I, along with another woman who was going through the same thing I was at the time, started the Plaza Breast Cancer Foundation in 2005 with a goal to endow a breast cancer chair at UC Davis Comprehensive Cancer Center. And since that time, we have met that goal, raising $1.5 million, and to date have almost raised $2 million for breast cancer research. We're just really proud of the work we've done. It has been a community effort on everybody's part with the businesses and individuals that have given to our organization to help find that cure for breast cancer. And we're just very excited about the plans we have this month of October. We had a fund run in the town square on September 26, and we had almost 500 participants. I want to thank Tracy Mendonza, Councilmember Mendonza, for being out there, and Councilmember Haddaschel is on our board, and our mayor personally supported that effort. And we continue to work with local businesses who are supporting our fund this month in holding fundraisers for us, and we're doing a campaign called Paint Plaster Pink. And we have Roseville Police that are selling patches. You see them on their uniforms, as well as the Roseville Fire Department is going to wrap one of their fire engines in pink this month. So you'll see it all around the city. So thank you so much for recognizing our group. It takes a village to make this happen, and without your support, that would not have happened. So thank you so much. I have bracelets. I'm just going to leave them on the table. They're for anybody in the audience who wants them, and for all of you. And please wear them and show the pink this month for breast cancer awareness. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Carol, thanks for all that you do. We have one more proclamation this evening. Item 5.2, Children's Environmental Health Month is October 2021, and Councilmember Rakuchi will present this proclamation.
Do we have Lorraine here?
Oh, good. Meet me there at the D S.
As you may know, Councilmember Rakuchi is a retired nurse. So this is near and dear for her.
Nice to meet you. Hi. Okay, well, this is Children's Environmental Health Month for October, and we're presenting this to you, the California Alliance of Nurses for Healthy Environments. Whereas the aim of the Children's Environmental Health Month is to raise awareness about the importance of clean air, water, safe food, and consumer products, healthy environments, and a stable climate for children's health and development. And whereas the state CEH Month was established September 1, 2021, through House Resolution 68 by the California State Assembly, and whereas the CEH Month provides a means to celebrate the progress of children's environmental health and create an even stronger network of child health advocates. Whereas CEH Month encourages individuals and organizations to raise awareness and understanding of children's environmental health issues, seek improved protections for all children, and perform acts of sustainability or environmental health wellness also. Whereas together, we can safeguard health, safety, and well-being of our most precious resource, our children. And therefore, with our mayor, Krista Bernuscony, and the City Council, we proclaim October 2021 as Children's Environmental Health Month and urge all citizens to observe this month with awareness raising and environmental health and stewardship activities to create a healthy environment for our kiddos.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
And if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear your words.
Thank you. You said more than I could say. But on behalf of Annie, the Association of Nurses for Healthy Environments, on behalf of those children living today, and on behalf of all those children who are yet to be born and who will never understand as much what you've done for them, I want to thank you for declaring October Children's Environmental Health Month, as was declared unanimously by the California State Assembly this year. As a working registered nurse for over 50 years, I have witnessed how climate change is drastically impacting both the psychological and the physical health of our youngest community members. Your declaration today and your actions in the future must help protect our children from the harmful exposures to our air, water, soil, and food products. Again, I thank you for your help today in that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. We'll move on to public comment, item 6.0. Now is a time for anyone to come to the podium on any item not on the agenda. Is there anyone this evening that would like to make any comments?
Good evening, council. My name is Kathleen Crawford, and I'm a resident of Sun City Roseville. I want to speak about the change in public comment by phone during your council meetings. I am one of the people who is still very concerned about where COVID is in this community, and today I looked up the COVID-19 dashboard for the Placer County Office of Public Health. Our county has suffered 384 total deaths. We are averaging, over the last 30 days, 69 average daily cases. In South Placer, which is our region, 27,699 cases out of a total of 34,764 cases for the county, which means that roughly 80% of all Placer County COVID cases are here in South Placer. Over 5,000 children younger than 18 have tested positive for COVID-19. All of this data is on the Placer County website. The 14-day regional case rate for our area is 237.4 per 100,000 population. It is clear that although our numbers are improving, they are not where they need to be for this to be over. It is not over. We have children who are not yet eligible for vaccination. We have immune-compromised individuals who still need protection, and it is important that we maintain a public posture that allows public input without necessarily attending a meeting, especially a meeting where only part of the people in the room are masked. The other issue is that the independent redistricting commission, will that not have public input by phone? Will that require public attendance in order to make input on this important, very important measure that's before us? So to me, although I understand that you've found a legal idea that says you can discontinue the public input by phone, it's not clear to me that that is a necessity, and I don't believe that it is in the public health interest of our community at this time. So I would hope that you would reconsider and continue what you've done for the last 18 months, which is allow public input by phone during your public meetings. And I would hope that that transparency continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Does our legal counsel want to weigh in on that, or?
I don't believe there was a question posed, was there?
Okay, just as it relates to the governor's new law?
Yes, so there was a change in the law to the Brown Act that went into effect October -- let me take this off -- that went into effect October 1 of this year that allows for virtual public meetings and virtual public comment, provided that there's a state of emergency and the council makes a determination for health and safety reasons that they want to have that public comment via phone. However, it does require, if you do that, to keep your public comment period open for the entire duration of your timed public comment period. So the city of Roseville has meeting procedures that require a 25-minute public comment period, as mentioned by the clerk at the beginning of the meeting. Because of that, we would need to keep public comment period open for the entire 25-minute period, and since the city of Roseville has two public comment periods, that means we would have to keep public comment period open for 50 minutes. So given that, the city has made the determination to cease calling public comment at this time, which is in compliance with the new Brown Act.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, council, mayor. My comment is along the same lines about public comment. It was mentioned about the 25-minute block for people that are in here, but if you don't have anybody in here, you stop public comment, correct, after a couple of minutes? So is that the case? Like, if there was done with public comment, you'd be done in five minutes? You don't have to hold it open in here for 25 minutes, right?
That's correct. But if you want to take advantage of this new Brown Act provision, you do have to keep it open for 25 minutes, even if you have to wait 25 minutes if you have the call-in option, to see if you get any callers.
Okay. So my comments on that, I just want to address that there are a lot of people that want to participate, and they are challenged to make it to meetings. Single parents with children, caregivers for elderly parents, people with disabilities, there is an option to call in, but you have to do it in advance to schedule that. People still at work, but there's an important issue they want to comment on. People commuting from work, and of course, COVID, which was already mentioned. Again, half the people in this room not wearing masks. I think it's an important option, and it's not ruled out by AB 361. It's an option that you all have. I think that with a competent staff, you could find a way to change -- the world is changing and evolving, and I think that it should be explored on how to make that available and work for people to be able to call in and make those public comments. And the reason I think that it's important is that when you tell people to email their comments, and they're doing it ahead of time, they don't get to hear what's going on in the meeting, they don't get to hear other people's comments, what other people think on the topic. And, you know, yes, you can make those things available later on for people to access, but you've already voted, in most cases, on those topics. And the people in the room or the people watching from TV don't get to hear those public comments. So unless you read those emailed comments out loud during the public comment session, so everybody can hear what other people are saying on the matter, I think that's important to allow people to call in. And I would like to see you find a workaround to allow people to call in, especially now with COVID still around. There are children, like she said, with no vaccinations. Those children may not be susceptible, but they bring it to other people, and other people, even vaccinated people, can be carriers to other people that may not be able to be vaccinated or have immune issues. I have people that have had transplants, and the vaccines do virtually nothing for them because of the rejection medications they're on. So there's lots of reasons why we should have public comment, and I hope you explore those. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else tonight who would like to make a public comment on any item not on the agenda?
Hello, I'm Patrick Angay. Thank you all for allowing me to speak here. I am the president of the Roseville Police Officers Association. What I have to say, actually, will take about four and a half minutes, so I hope you give me that leeway to get through it. I am representing 122 members of that union, so I ask that you give me a little extra time to relay everything that I have here. I'm here to talk to you briefly about scheduling, staffing, and service levels as it relates to the members of the Roseville Police Officers Association. I've been a member of that union since 2002, and in 2009, I became involved with the board that represented that union. At that time, in 2009, we had 117 members. As I stand here today, we have 122. So 12 years later, we have five additional members. Of those 122, there's a myriad of reasons as to why their status as 122 full-time employees is eroded away, and I just want to briefly touch on a couple of those topics. One of the -- in basic math, we're 40-hour-a-week employees. We work 2,080 hours a year. By contract and municipal code, we receive roughly 10% of that time off per year as leave in some way, shape, or form. That brings everybody down to just below a 90% of full-time employee. Then you add on top of that ancillary jobs. There's so many ancillary jobs within the police department because it's such a high liability profession, professional standards units, SWAT teams, hostage negotiations teams. Those all take a lot of training. Once you subtract that training out department-wide, it ends up being, for those people on special teams, probably, on average, 200 hours a year of training. Subtract that out department-wide, and you've just knocked another 5% off of that full-time status. So now we're looking at some number down about 83%. You then throw in on top of that the workers' comp issues. Historically, workers' comp issues would cause one to two employees to be out on some form of leave. In recent history, probably 10 is the minimum, and maximally, I think the number's been 17. Out of a group of 122, that's a more than 10% number. Obviously, it fluctuates up and down, but I think averaging a 10% loss of working hours as a result of that is reasonable. So now we're down somewhere in the mid-70s as to each full-time employee's actual ability to work. Then you throw actual regular sick leave and COVID issues on top of that. I don't have numbers to support that, but my rough guess is probably somewhere between 5 and 10% total loss. So now you're into the upper 60s of what an actual employee will actually work out of a given 2,080-hour work year. So the reason I'm bringing this to you now is because of what that means. What it really means is, every time the council, the chief asks for a new full-time employee, the council approves a new full-time employee, you're actually only getting about 6/10ths of a full-time employee. But we always attribute one new full-time employee to one new full-time job. So every time that happens, you automatically create a deficit. Every single time it occurs, the new deficit is born. So as a result of that, the deficits keep piling up, keep piling up. The reality is, if you want to add two new positions within the police department, you really need to add three people every time, because those are the realities of today. And with the constant issues with the workers' comp and the issues that are growing over time, I don't believe the number of people on workers' comp is going to go down. I believe it's going to go up. I believe it's going to go up significantly over time. And I believe if we don't plan for that, it's going to be hugely detrimental. But as we're doing it right now, the way we're resolving this deficit that we have is mass quantities of forced overtime, mass quantities of drawing from specialty assignments, bringing them back to the heart of the police department, which is patrol, and having them do patrol duties as a regular occurrence. I talked to a member two days ago that worked four 15-hour shifts in a row. That's the kind of thing that leads to burnout. That's the kind of thing that leads to bad decision-making. That's the kind of thing that leads to an employee getting injured at work, and instead of doing everything they can to get back to work as fast as possible, they treat it as a way to take a break from the forced overtime. And we're creating the issue for ourselves. So my ask here is that we look at the way we appoint positions, the way we create new jobs for those positions, and try to recognize we're not actually filling every position every time we get a new person on the staff. We're filling 6/10ths of a position. So I think there is a strategic plan that's coming that's going to address some of that, but the reality right now is, there's a service level promise to the community that the council has not budgeted the humans for. There is not enough people to provide the service level on a continuing basis. So my ask here is, we need to examine our current service level, and at a very rapid pace, identify the things that are core responsibilities, and then identify a path to bring back the things that we would really like to have, the things that make quality of life in Roseville so good. We're losing a lot of that, and I fear that there's going to come a point in time where a bad decision is going to become a high-liability event. So I ask you to consider that, and any future decision-making regarding new bodies is concerned, and I ask you to make some decisions now that stem the tide of the problem that we're seeing cropping up. So if anybody has any questions about that, I believe I know most of you, and I believe most of you have my phone number. Feel free to call me at any time, and I'll be happy to talk to you more. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to make a comment under public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll move into consent calendar and ask our clerk to please read the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion of consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, staff, or the public requests an item be removed. At this time, we have two items that have been requested to be removed. City Attorney Michelle Scheidenberger has requested item 7.6 be removed, and item 7.7 has been requested to be removed by Vice Mayor Haddaschel.
Thank you. Is there any members of the public that wish for an item to be removed from our consent calendar?
May I have a motion to remove items 7.6 and 7.7 from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action, and approve the remaining items as recommended?
Second. Vice Mayor Haddaschel?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernuscony?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item 7.6, the Tower Theater Option Agreement.
Yes. Good evening. I ask to remove 7.6 from the consent calendar. 7.6 is an option agreement for the sale of the Tower Theater. This is to correct an omission that was made in the accompanying resolution. The initial resolution authorized the city manager to execute that option agreement, but what it failed to do is to authorize the city manager to execute the grant deed and escrow documents should that option be exercised, and that is authority that the title company will want to see in the resolution. So before use of revised resolution with that additional authorization, no changes were made to the actual agreement.
Thank you. Anyone from the council have questions on this? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone tonight that would like to speak to this item? Close public comment, and if the city doesn't have any -- or the council doesn't have any other questions or comments, we'll ask for an action item or a motion, please.
To adopt Resolution Number 21-423, approving an option agreement by and between the city of Roseville and University Development Foundation, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. May I have a motion?
Second. Vice Mayor Haddaschel?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernuscony?
Yes, thank you. Okay, the second item that we pulled is item 7.7, Roseville Municipal Code Amendment to Sign Ordinance.
Mayor, I asked for this item to be removed because I had a couple of questions of our city attorney. First, do we usually typically amend the municipal code under a consent item? Can you give a little history on this particular code amendment for the sign ordinance?
Yes. So our municipal code amendments can be either on the consent calendar or off the consent calendar. Charter allows that. Typically, you'll see consent items for municipal amendments if they're non-substantive or clarifying edits to the municipal code, as this one is. This is a non-substant clarifying edit to the municipal code. This actually codifies an interpretation of the municipal code that was made in 2017 from the city attorney's office and outside counsel. And what this does is this clarifies that when it comes to digital billboards along the freeway, it clarifies that the city can construct and maintain those billboards and erect new billboards along the freeway without having or requiring the removal or relocation of existing billboards. I believe that the current code currently allows that, but this adds in explicit language that says that.
Okay, thank you. And then I may have been reading the council communication too closely and the ordinance too closely. The council communication refers to landscaped portions of freeways. We have two freeways, Highway 65, which is a state one, I-80, which is a federal one, right? And it says -- well, my first question is, what static billboard is on Highway 65 that would require a relocation agreement?
So there's none along 65.
So there -- and the staff report says there are only landscape portions of Highway 80, the federal highway, right?
Yes. So there's a federal law called the Highway Beautification Act that deals with landscape portions along federal freeways. Portions of I-80 are in those landscape portions, and portions are not.
And does the city currently have any easement or leasehold in those landscape portions, in that landscape portion? in that landscape portion?
No.
How broad is it? So the ordinance as language, it says pursuant to either a relocation agreement or an agreement negotiated following one of the city's standard procurement processes. Is that, how broad is that language? Does that language, is that language perspective in nature?
Yes. So what this municipal code says is that the city would be able to construct a billboard along the freeway if they're doing it pursuant to a relocation agreement, i.e. that they're working with an advertiser to remove a billboard and replace it with a new digital billboard, or the city issued an RFP or is one of its other standard procurement processes and hired a advertising company to construct a billboard. So this allows for the city to either remove and replace or add a new digital billboard.
Okay, so I might be getting the landscape quarter and the relocation, or relocated sign confused. So there's no landscape quarter on Highway 65. So you, so the finding, a relocation agreement may be approved if the city council makes the following findings. That relocated sign, we don't have any signs on Highway 65, right?
That's correct.
That wouldn't apply on Highway 65?
That's correct, and that's partly why we needed this municipal code amendment, because it applies that you always need a relocation agreement, and that's not what the municipal code is intended or should say. So it should say either we're going to have a relocation agreement, in which case the rest of those code sections, B, C, and D, apply, talks about what a relocation is, what the criteria, or the city issued an RFP or did a piggybacking and selected an advertising company and entered into a contract with them to install a new billboard.
So this could happen prospectively, if somebody could, at some point in time, could ask for a relocation agreement at Blue Oaks and Highway 65, okay? And then last question, is this modeled after an ordinance that is in another city that fronts freeways, Vacaville, Davis?
So initially, when this ordinance was written, it was modeled after the City of Sacramento's ordinance, but they have a different type of ordinance. They actually require that three signs be removed before you can get a new digital billboard sign. So that's not how ours is.
Static signs or three digital?
I believe, I don't remember now.
Okay, that's all right. Three for one, though.
Three for one, yeah. Usually, it's static signs because what you're trying to do is clean up the freeway frontages.
Yeah, that makes sense because you have static, digital signs that have more, yeah, more turnover.
Our ordinance isn't like that because we don't have those, all those signages on our freeways.
And has this been challenged? Is there any legal city cases on this that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks. I just, again, you know, this is pretty significant. I just needed those clarifications. I don't have any other questions. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions of this? We'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone tonight that has questions on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, and if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion is to introduce for first reading ordinance of the council of the City of Roseville amending Section 17.17.035 of Chapter 17.17 of Title 17 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Signs on Public Property. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haudashelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernasconi?
Yes.
And thank you to my colleagues for.
Good questions.
On that.
Okay, we have three resolutions this evening. We'll start with item 8.1, California arrears payment program. I always write that as rearranged, but it's not authorization to participate.
It's a weird word. It's like.
Aarrears. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and members of the council. I'm Sean Macham, Assistant Director with Roseville Electric. With me this evening is Andrea Blumquist, our Utility Billing Manager, and Noel Maddick, or not our, Environmental Utilities Government Relations Administrator. We have a joint presentation for you this evening on the next three agenda items, item 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3. These are action items that we are recommending for council approval regarding our participation jointly, Environmental Utilities and Electric, participation in a number of state programs that are available to assist customers here in the community that may be passed due on electricity bills, water bills, or wastewater bills. I'll note before getting into the presentation, the concept or the support for providing assistance to customers that may need it through COVID-19, customers that may be passed due on these types of balances, is something that our utilities, both jointly with EU, we've been advocating for through our legislative platform, through our legislative advocacy, and we think these items are very good for us to help the community, help our customers. And so we wanted to preview what these items are about for you as you consider them for action this evening. There's been a lot of work already on, by both Electric, Environmental Utilities, to prepare for participation in these programs, and we wanted to talk a little more about it tonight. There's still more work to do, and both Andrea and Noel will talk about the program, where we are, and the path forward in terms of getting participation from the two departments. So with that, I'll stop there and turn it over to Andrea to discuss the electric part of the program, which is the California Arrears Payment Program, or CAP.
The California Arrears Payment Program is a $1 billion legislative package for COVID-19 electric and gas arrears. The program is approximately $300 million dedicated to public-owned utilities. It's administered by the California Department of Community Services and Development. The funding itself applies to arrears that are accumulated from March 4, 2020, through June 15 of 2021. The statewide assistance exceeds the funding available, and Roseville arrears for Electric are 1.37 million, roughly 3,100 accounts, and a resolution is needed to accept and expend CAP funds. Implementation, the CAP program prioritizes expenditures of funds for residential accounts, followed by inactive residential accounts, and then commercial accounts. There are disconnection restrictions that apply, first while CSD reviews and approves applications, then for 90 days after the benefit is applied to accounts, and then while the customer is current or on a repayment plan. There are some ongoing issues with taxes. They may impact customers receiving credits above $599, and we are working to advocate for benefits not to be considered taxable income. For the CAP timeline, in early September, Roseville submitted our initial survey response. In mid-October, the CSD is going to release CAP funding applications, and roughly 60 days later, by mid-December, the CAP application is due to the CSD. By January 31 of 2022, we expect that CAP funds will be fully dispersed by the CSD to the utility, and the utility has 60 days from that time to apply the credits after receiving those CAP funds. On the CAP program itself, there's more to come, and the assistance we can apply to our account holders. Moving on to the Emergency Rental Assistance, or the ERA program, it's a U.S. Treasury-funded program in which the City of Roseville, in partnership with Placer County, have assisted 320 residential households to date. On average, those households have been assisted with $11,000 each. Over $3.6 million in assistance has been provided. 90% of that is in rental assistance, 10% in utility assistance. The funding covers staffing costs to administer the program, rental and utility arrears, as well as forward rent and utilities up to 15 months total. Referrals were accepted late March through April 30, and although the Housing Division is still processing the last of the applications, all eligible applicants will be assisted by this program. The administration of the ERA program will cease by the end of the calendar year, but the state will continue to serve Roseville and Placer County renters through the Housing is Key program available at www.housing.ca.gov. Renters still in need of assistance should apply with the state's program. On that note, passing off to Noel.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I'm going to cover two different programs, both that are going to be helping water and wastewater customers. The first one is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. This program was actually congressionally established in 2020 with funding, and $116 million was allocated to California for this temporary program. The Community Services District is administering the program, and in order to move forward with the program, the state had to submit an application to the federal government, which they did on August 9. They are supposed to have already approved it, but as I was heading over here for the meeting, did a last-minute check, they still haven't approved it, but they are supposed to start expending the funds for this program in November. What is interesting and probably good is this program is actually modeled after one that is already in existence, and that's the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. It is an income-based program, which, to qualify, residents need to be at 60% of the median household income or lower. And what's also different about this program versus the other programs that we're talking about this evening is it actually can be used outside of the COVID period of that March 2020 to June 2021. The deadline that CSD has to expend the funds is September 23, so this program will actually help residents even after all of the other arrears funding has been expended. Customers can receive up to $1,000 to cover both water and wastewater arrears, and they can also receive help from LIHEEP of up to $1,000. So they could actually receive up to $2,000 for their combined bill for Roseville. One of the things that we're also doing is you can receive funding directly from CSD or through a local service provider. It's much more efficient, and we already have an agreement to receive the funding from the state, so we're going to be pursuing that when that option comes available. Moving on to the second program, sorry, which is being run by the State Water Resources Control Board. In this year's budget, $985 million was awarded to the California State Water Resources Control Board for the California Water and Wastewater Arrears Payment Program. Again, it applies to arrears strictly accumulated from March 4 of 2020 to June 15 of 2021. The legislature did provide a timeline and guidance to establish the program because it's a brand-new program and that's being stood up by an entity that has never done this, whereas CSD has lots of experience handling the other programs. In that guidance, the state provided wastewater as being a second-tier receiver of arrears. Basically, in order for the state to provide funding for wastewater arrears, there had to be enough funding to cover all of the water arrears, and then funding would spill over and then be allocated to the wastewater. That was actually determined when they adopted their resolution on September 21. There is ample funding to cover the water arrears in the state, and so they are going to be setting up the wastewater arrears program, and they're anticipating doing that in January or February timeframe. The implementation, so one of the first steps in the process was we had to submit a survey to the State Water Board, and in that, what we submitted was we have 522 residential customers behind on their water bills. I'm pulling out that 49 in excess of 600. Because of that tax liability issue, we don't want to have our residents be hit with a tax bill, so we're doing everything within our power to work with the federal government to assure that there are no tax implications for those that are actually receiving this, who receive in excess of $600. So the total for residential funding we're seeking is around $130,000. And then we do, this program does apply to commercial customers as well, and so we did have 40 commercial customers behind on their water bills, five of which were in excess of 600, and so we're seeking $19,000 to help those customers out. Today, the State Water Board released their application, so I am working very closely with Andrea in finance and to make sure that we have that submitted by, within that 60-day So we do have, well, the State Water Board has until January 31 to expend the funds, and one of the other big items that took place was the legislature, in the last hours, extended the shut-off for water to December 31 of, oh, that's, yeah, 2021. I'm already flipping years. So that means we cannot shut off anybody's water if they have arrears. Currently, the State Water Board, I already gave that information to you, we have been working to try and figure out how much of funding we're going to be needing and whom our customers are. We have 466 customers that could be helped by this program, and the total that we would be seeking potentially is $112,000.
So that's our prepared presentation for the various programs that we're advancing to help customers that may be passed due on balances for electricity, water, and wastewater, and we can answer any questions you may have on the program and the path forward.
Thank you for that. Does the council have any questions of staff? You want to start with Councilmember Albert?
My question's kind of more of a comment, and then let me know if I'm correct or correct me on it. When I read through this, I was excited because I know, you know, our ratepayers own our utility, and if somebody is unable to pay, and they really don't pay, it eventually comes back to the ratepayers because we have to cover their costs, and so it affects our ratepayers in the long run by, you know, they have to pick up the tab, basically. And so this was a neat thing because it helps our regular ratepayers that are able to pay their bills, and of course, helps a lot of our community that's really struggling. So I thought that was a really good win-win, and one of the questions I asked in my session was, do we get administrative fees? Because it takes effort to manage all this process and getting the funds moved around, and my understanding is yes, we do. And I guess one clarification, does it more than cover our work here, or?
There's, there's actually only one program that.
There's only one, okay, good.
Yes.
I'd like to hear about that.
There's only one program, and that's the Water and Wastewater Arrears Program. They, we can request up to 3% of our funding to go towards that.
Cover our efforts on that one?
I will turn to Andrea.
On that one, yes, on that program. The other programs do not have administrative fees, and so we're operating those within current operating staff.
Okay, well, I guess the math question, are we still ahead?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm sure. Thank you for answering that.
Most importantly, our customers will be ahead.
Absolutely.
So a quick procedural question. So we will get the money, and then the customers will see a credit on their bills, so there won't be that transaction. Okay, thank you.
Any questions over here?
I think that's good because during this COVID time, a lot of people lost their jobs, couldn't have money, then no way to really pay even when they were good payers. So I think this gets them back into the game again and even playing field so they can have their life back. So this is good.
So we are hearing these three items concurrently, so items 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3. So I'll open it up to public comment, and anyone tonight that would like to speak to one of the three items that we just heard from, you can come forward and make a comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on these items? Okay, I'll close public comment. Does the council have any further deliberation before we have a motion? Does the council have any further deliberation before we have a motion? Okay, would you mind reading the motion, please?
So we will take separate action on each item. Item 8.1 is the California Arrears Payment Program, and that is to adopt Resolution Number 21-414, authorizing participation in the California Arrears Payment Program. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonsa?
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony?
Yes, thank you.
Item 8.2 is the California Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program, and that is to adopt Resolution Number 21-418, authorizing participation in the California Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonsa?
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony?
Yes.
And the last item is item 8.3, which is the California Water and Wastewater Arrears Payment Program, and the motion is to adopt Resolution Number 21-417, authorizing participation in the California Water and Wastewater Arrears Payment Program. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonsa?
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. This will be great benefit for residents. Okay, we have one ordinance, we have one ordinance this evening, proposed amendments to the campaign finance ordinance. We'll be hearing from Assistant City Attorney Joe Speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, members of the council. Joe Speaker and I are here this evening to provide you the language for the ordinance amendment, and at this point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Joe.
Thank you. As you know, the city of Roseville transitioned to district-based elections back in 2019, and since that change, staff has received several complaints from citizens about ambiguities and requests for amendments to the campaign finance ordinance due to the recent change to the district-based elections. And as you recall, Sonia and myself were at the July 21st, 2021 City Council meeting, where we requested direction on possible amendments to Chapter 2.60 of the Roseville Municipal Code. Specifically, we came forward with suggestions regarding the updates to the enforcement section, considering new contribution limits, amending or reaffirming fundraising timeframes, advising on existing office holder accounts, and whether or not we should require electronic filing of all campaign reports. After a robust three-hour discussion, council direction was given to staff to follow up with some amended language. Specifically, direction was given regarding violation enforcement language. City Council indicated that this section should be amended to make clear that upon discovery of a campaign finance violation, the city would work with an election candidate before taking formal enforcement action. Regarding family contribution limits, City Council indicated that this section should be amended to read that contributions by dependent children under the age of 18 should be treated as contributions by their parents or legal guardians, and attributing one half to each parent or legal guardian, or the total amount to a single custodian parent or legal guardian, if only one. And then there was direction given regarding electronic filing of election reports. Specifically, City Council indicated that this section should be amended to read that all election reports should be filed electronically, and this is expressly permitted under state law. So the proposed changes before you this evening make all of those recommended changes. There's also, in making the language changes directed by council, staff noticed that there had been a historical cross-reference to a section of state law that was no longer applicable to how the city calculates annual campaign contribution limit increases. Specifically, this relates to our current practice of rounding to the nearest $10. So you may have noticed that there's a non-substantive amendment to Roseville Municipal Code that removes that outdated state law cross-reference and instead spells out our current practice. So the recommendation before you tonight, staff recommends that the City Council introduce for first reading an ordinance amending sections 2.60.065 and 2.60.070 and 2.60090 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding campaign finance disclosures. And with that, Sonia and I are available for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of staff? Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we have a motion.
The motion is to introduce for first reading an ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville, amending Chapter 2.60 of Title II of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding campaign finance disclosure. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonsa?
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony?
Yes, thank you, thank you, guys.
Okay, we have one public hearing this evening, item 10.1, Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcels, FD 2, FD 5, FD 9, FD 40, FD 63, 64, general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and development agreement amendment.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, members of the City Council. I'm Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with your Development Services Department. Tonight, the item before you is just some minor land use amendments to the Federico portion of the Sierra Vista Specific Plan. So for the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Sean Morales, our Associate Planner.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Bernascony and council members. My name is Sean Morales. I'm an Associate Planner, and I'm here tonight to present to you the Solair Phase 6 project. The project site consists of approximately 55 acres of undeveloped land in the western portion of the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, generally north of Vista Grande Boulevard, west of Market Street, south of Earl Rush Drive, and east of Santucci Boulevard. The project includes several entitlements that will allow for the development of 294 residential units, including general plan and specific plan amendments, to transfer units among two parcels and change the land use designation of one parcel, and a development agreement amendment in order to reflect the land use change in unit transfers. A tentative subdivision map and major grading plan were approved by the Planning Commission at their meeting on August 26, 2021, and at that meeting, the previously listed amendments were also recommended for approval to the City Council by the Commission. The general plan amendment and specific plan amendments are requested in order to transfer 23 units from parcel FD 5 to parcel FD 2. Currently, the parcels have roughly the same density, and as a result of the unit transfers, the density for FD 2 will increase by 24% and will change from low-density to medium-density residential land use designation, and the density of FD 5 will decrease by 26%. The unit transfer will create additional differentiation in the housing product available in the Solair area. Right now, they are generally the same density and would provide the same housing product, but after the transfer, FD 2 will have smaller lots with smaller homes, and FD 5 will provide larger lots with larger homes. However, the overall number of units designated for the project area will remain the same at 294 after the transfer. In addition to the amendments to the general plan and specific plan, the Fifth Amendment to the West Park Federico Development Agreement is requested in order to reflect the change in land use and the unit allocations. Staff determined that the proposed land use amendments and transfers will have no impact to the planned infrastructure, roadways, or other facilities beyond what was anticipated in the area. So in conclusion, staff finds that the land use change and unit transfers are consistent with citywide policy, and that the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, community design guidelines, and the Sierra Vista Specific Plan. Additionally, an addendum was prepared to the specific plan EIR, and no new significant impacts were found beyond what was anticipated in the original EIR. Therefore, the Planning Commission at their meeting recommended that the City Council take action on the entitlements as listed on the slide, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff on this item?
No questions.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to come forward on this item?
Members of the council, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard here in Roseville. On behalf of West Park Communities, I'd first like to express our appreciation of staff, particularly Mr. Morales, for all the work they've done on our application in getting us to this point. The staff reports to you and to the Planning Commission, along with staff presentation, thoroughly describe our requested unit transfer between the two parcels, as well as the minor change from LDR to MDR in parcel FD 2. With that, we would ask that you approve the request before you, as presented. We are here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And it's been on the screen, but this is the one item we will be hearing public comment on the telephone, so if anyone does want to call in, there is a little delay, but the phone number is 916-774-5353. Is there anyone else tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and council. I have one question. With the increased density, are there going to be any low or affordable income housing in that specific change?
So this is public comment, and I'll leave it to staff if they want to address that item.
Sure. These particular parcels do not have an affordable housing allocation. The Sierra Vista Specific Plan does have parcels scattered throughout that do meet the city's affordable housing goals, the policy of having 10% of all housing in Sierra Vista provided for affordable housing. So there is affordable housing in the Sierra Vista Specific Plan. This particular project does not have affordable housing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to make a comment? Who's in the chambers with us? No? Okay, do we have any phone calls? Oh, we have zero phone calls. Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and ask our clerk to please read the motion.
The motion is to consider the Fifth Addendum to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report and adopt Resolution Number 21-421, amending the general plan to change the land use designations on certain real property in the city of Roseville, and adopt Resolution Number 21-422, amending the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and adopt the five findings of fact and introduce for first reading an ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville, adopting a Fifth Amendment of the Development Agreement by and between the City of Roseville, Solair Community Builders, as a signee of West Park Sierra Vista LLC, as a signee of West Park Federico LLC, Moyer Investments LLC, and Federico Tyler Family Limited Partnership, relative to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonsa?
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. So we will open it up for our last public comment. This is a night, this is a time for anyone who would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda. Does anyone have any last comments for this evening?
Okay, we'll close public comment and turn it back to, I'll start with staff. Does staff have any comments this evening?
Just a brief one, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Late last week, City Manager Casey accepted the National Assistance League Operation School Bell Award on behalf of the City of Roseville, the City Council, and the Grants Advisory Commission. The Assistance League of Plaster nominated the City of Roseville. This award is selectively given to those who have significantly supported a chapter through financial, in-kind, or service support, and to those who've had a direct, powerful, and positive impact on Operation School Bell in a chapter's community. Through the many years, the City of Roseville's generosity to the community and to the Operation School Bell program has seen thousands of children in need of school clothing and shoes clothed, and having an opportunity to receive those items. It's great to see the Citizens Benefit Fund doing great things in our community. I just wanted to recognize the great work the Assistance League of Plaster County does in our community, and also recognize the City Council, the Grants Advisory Commission for the funding programs such as this that have such a positive impact on the community. And that is it.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Anything this evening, Michelle?
No, I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alver, do you want to start us off with your comments?
Yeah, probably one of the biggest things happening right now is just kind of finishing up. Our Roseville Chamber of Commerce during the COVID situation had lost a lot of membership. A lot of companies that were struggling or not sure what the future is going to be like didn't renew their membership. And so quite a few people in the community got together and volunteered and formed teams in kind of a fun little competitive thing, just with bragging rights only, reached out to lots and lots of businesses to try to build up the membership again. And the advantage of our chamber, it's a five-star chamber, which is very rare in our state, and the, the chamber is kind of an economic powerhouse. They really represent small businesses, they try to draw businesses here, they're a good attraction for businesses looking to relocate, and they also do a good job of trying to retain businesses as well. And so it, it helps our economy to have a healthy Chamber of Commerce. And so many of us, I know several council members up here were volunteering as well, reaching out, trying to grow, and I know as of today, it actually ends tomorrow officially, but about $150,000 worth of membership, actual payments came in so far, and so that's, that's really impressive in two days, two days' worth. And so I just wanted to mention to all the community volunteers out there, and especially the business owners that decided to support our, our economy, you know, thank you for your efforts, and, and I know this is a fantastic thing for the community, and if anybody's out there considering joining the chamber, please contact the chamber tomorrow. Just be sure and say Team Red when you, when you do that. So ignore what anybody else says about that, but yeah. But I got to go first. That's the biggest thing, thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's been mentioned previously, longtime Chamber Executive Wendy Garrick will be retiring later this year, and new, new executive, executive officer has been chosen, and she'll come on board, so this is sort of a transitional thing, and go Team Green. Last night, I had an opportunity to participate with our Assistant Exec, Assistant Director of Environmental Utilities, Sean Bigley, and Plaster County Water Agency on a water forum, Western Water Forum. I'm excited that the weather is changing out there. It feels a little, feels like there's a little moisture in the air. It was timely. This is Water Professionals Appreciation Week, and we do, we should be appreciating all they do, especially in these historically challenging times. Tomorrow night, I know Councilmember Akuchi, who served on Plaster County Water Agency at one point in time, and, and I will be attending the Regional Water Authority's 20th anniversary. That'll be on a rooftop, so I'm thinking I'm guaranteeing rain on the rooftop tomorrow night. But you know, this is a long history. I think later this month, we'll be celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Barton Road Water Treatment Facility. So we have a long history, and you know, it is the fortitude of our, and perseverance of our water professionals that have planned for this moment. Folsom looks pretty bleak. I noticed as I drove by it on Sunday, there is a, I'll call it a contraption, but I'm sure the Bureau calls it something more professional, but it looked like drip irrigation coming down that will serve the city of Folsom and Folsom Prison, but we have about 228,000 acre feet still in there, and we're planning for next year in case the coming year is dry. But without the fortitude of, you know, the predecessors of Rich Plecker and Sean Bigley, people like Ed Criss and Derek Whitehead, who, you know, fought mightily to get the aquifer storage and recovery permitted through the Regional Water Quality Control Board, we wouldn't have the resiliency in our water system that we have today. So it's fitting that in Water Professional Appreciation Week, we recognize not only our current professionals, but those that preceded them. As I drove here tonight, Deion, I found, I saw a lot of graffiti. Washington Boulevard is, you know, being widened, and on the directional signs, there was, there seemed to be a lot of tagging going on.
I sent that to the city.
Oh, thank you. Then I'm done, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mendonsa?
Just a couple things, as you just heard, Vice Mayor Haddishel and Councilmember Akuchi will be at the beautiful rooftop of the Sutter Club tomorrow, so he'll be very busy, and Councilman Alver, with all of his classes that he does over at Jessup, is also busy. So in the spirit of, of being a team up here, if anyone is looking to join the chamber, I'd be more than happy to-
Oh.
There you go, that was good.
As, as Councilmember Alver said, this is all in good fun, and strictly for bragging rights, but I would be remiss if I didn't join in on the, on the healthy competitiveness, which ends tomorrow at 3:27. I don't know why they picked that arbitrary time, but that's when it ends. See any of us, or call us, or contact us if you're interested, because we would love to make you a member of this wonderful chamber. One of my council- One of my council assignments is the Roseville Police Activities League, or ARPAL. And they had their, I believe it's third annual, fourth annual, if you don't count the year they skipped last year for COVID, Bacon and Brew on Runnin Town Square. Many of our local businesses and business leaders attended, contributed, or assisted in making that possible. So on behalf of ARPAL and other people, I'd like to thank everyone who helped with that. We raised a substantial amount of money, which ARPAL will then put back into our community and do some very good things. They have some great youth programs. And I know during the holidays, they're very generous in giving with those contributions they collect throughout the year. So it really is truly one of those nonprofits that you can immediately see the return on the investment within our immediate community. So I want to again thank everybody who came out and made that a success. And if you missed it this year, be sure to look it up for next year, because it really is a great time. And it does serve a lot of good needs here in our community. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Akuchi?
You know, we've talked about water and honoring the things that we're working with with water, especially during this drought, and hoping that it rains. We're also have opportunities working on our electricity. And I had the opportunity to go to an annual conference on electricity with our Northern California Power Agency. And it's a, it's a public power agency joint action. And actually, they have their offices here in Roseville. And what that does is, when you work together as a team with a lot of cities and even Port of Oakland, you have more synergy and have a little bit more ability to work on federal and state issues. And just as important, when Vice Mayor Haddishel was talking about the dams and equipment they use to pump water out, you know, during this time, electricity cannot be produced at some of these dams that have historically produced electricity because the water is so far down. So you know, Shasta, Oroville, Folsom, everything's different right now. But again, it's one of our pride resources that we have, that's available to us. And it will be again as soon as we get our, as soon as it rains, right? You can do the rain dance, we get that going. But it was really nice to, it's been 18 months since NCPA has had any face-to-face meetings. And this time, we were able to have a conference and go over a lot of key state and federal legislation. And I'll just tell you a cute little story. It was different, I went to the, it was actually the attorney's talk, but it was on car electrification. But it was for cities like in Southern California that have been doing it a long time. And they were talking about things that we just haven't, we're just starting to get there. Like, how many, how many of the electric devices do you put in to get your, to get your electrification for your car? Do you put one or two? Or do you have it high energy or low energy? And where they put them in Southern California? And who pays for them? And if they don't work, what do you do? So it was, it got you to the other level, you know, of thinking. And plus, there were a lot of other talks. And we had an inspirational speaker, who was, I think she was an admiral, almost a vice admiral, in the military. And she, her job was going from polar ice caps to, you know, it was always, it was, it was in very cold, breaking ice in areas. And she was the ship's captain in an area that was unheard of for, not even, not too many men did it, most of those women. And it was how she did that. And then she was actually, went back and was doing old work in Washington DC. But her story, and it was just amazing to have her speak there. It was, I know it was a public power talk, but her dynamic insightfulness could be used on any, on every level. So it was quite good. So, so we got to, after 18 months, we got to see people that we only knew on Zoom. So this is good.
Good, thank you. Just a few things to share before we wrap up for the evening. Just some community activity. I've joined my colleagues on the park dedications or rededications. We were at Harry Crab Park a couple weeks ago, the rededication of that. This past Saturday, the city dedicated a park to former mayor Jim Gray. And then on October 16th, we will be at Central Park for a dedication for that. And also, keep an eye out for the Be Well Roseville Series. I attended one at Mahaney and spoke with the attendees there. But the kickoff for that is coming up. Just some reporting on the committees, some of the committees that I am a part of. I joined Vice Mayor Haddishel on a working committee on homelessness, the task force, mostly in the context of receiving federal dollars. It's a collaborative approach throughout South Placer to hopefully come with additional solutions that we're working on. I'm part of a meeting with Placer County Leadership, our county executive, our city manager, our county supervisors, and myself. Just really helpful to have open dialogue with South Placer, as well as a meeting with, we do the same with the South Placer Cities, city of Rockland, Lincoln, and Roseville. We meet with the city managers too, to talk about areas of priority for us. I want to just commend staff on the communication when it comes to the Washington expansion. That's a major thoroughfare for many of us. And I think they're doing a great job with alerting when the closures are going to be, what the detours are. It does get messy, as construction does, but we just have to be patient with it, because it will pay off. And they're really doing, I think, a solid job on helping the community to navigate. We will be out at the Barton Road Water Treatment Plant for the 50th anniversary, October 14th. Next meeting, I will not be here. So Bruce Haddishel will be pulling it down. I'll be with other area electeds and business advocates in Washington DC on a mayor's trip. Just a couple things that as Vice Mayor in 2023 takes over as mayor, you know, one of the very fun things that you get to do, and our council members get to do this too, is the best part about this is, for me at least, is the engagement with the students. And last week, I was invited to take part in Roseville High School's traditional parade that they do around their immediate neighborhood during the day before homecoming. And they had asked if I would take part in that, and that was really fun. And I heard it then, and I heard it today, which I was at Quail Glen Elementary today to read, or to talk to students. They were on their local government chapter. And the questions that you get from kids is pretty amazing. And I heard at the high school, number one, they can't believe the mayor's a female, which I still am astounded that that still happens. They thought my husband was maybe the mayor. You know, they think we're rich. I had to explain, they want to know how much we get paid. And I was like, well, it probably comes down to, I pay, we pay. They think that we live in a mansion. I told them I'm sorry to break that myth too. So anyway, really fun, but it was an opportunity to, it's always an opportunity to be able to bring local government down to our youngest residents. And then the last thing I want to share is that we just saw the final version of it today. But I'm teaming up with the mayors of Lincoln and Rockland, who are both female as well. And the three of us will be hosting a blood drive on October 29th at the mall, Center Court of the Mall. So I'll give it to city staff, but kind of like, you know, we want your blood that day. So it's just for community benefit. We'll be in the Center Court, October 29th, 12 to 4. And you know, it's free to give blood. So I hope that you'll join me out there. And I think that's all I have for this evening. Our next meeting will be, I should know this, October 20th at 6:00 PM. So I'll adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you all later. Thank you for being here.